Good evening, like all the Alton Board of Selectmen's meetings, July 13th, 2020 to order. It's time, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the Honorable Mr. Roberts here with us. I'd like to have him read us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, free, just, and equal.
Before we get on to the agenda or approval of the agenda, feel further notice to keep our members and staff safe and apply to RS 891-8, state emergency and government's orders. Restriction on public gatherings, the Town of Alton is moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend a meeting audio only, visit our website, www.alkonnh.gov. For telephone access and remote access instruction listed on the news and announcements on the homepage, or telephone Selectmen's Office, 603-875-2113, or 603-875-0229. Between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. for the dialing code and meeting ID for each Selectmen's meeting. If there continues to be no public input at this time, you wish to have something written into the record, please call the Selectmen's Office at 603-875-2113, or 603-875-0229, or email selectman@alkonnh.com, or mail a letter to the Board of Selectmen at PO Box 659, Alton, New Hampshire, 03809. Your comments, questions, and concerns will be read at the next available meeting and answered at that meeting or the next available meeting. So in this time, I'll ask for amendments to the agenda or approval of the agenda as submitted. Rochelle.
Yes, and new business, I'd like to add the Route 28 Cemetery complaint and number eight, Suph, New Hampshire, Pedoyle Company.
Suph, New Hampshire?
Suph, New Hampshire Pedoyle Company.
That would be number eight. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended and submitted to?
Second.
Motion made by Ruben Whitworth to approve the agenda as amended and submitted to the Board of Selectmen, second by Mr. McDonald. Any other discussion? Those in favor, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
No announcements to make tonight, we'll move on to submission of public comments, questions, concerns. Jonathan Dowding. After much consideration, Steve Childs and I took a poll on June 26th on the Alton Bay Community Group. Conclusion was overwhelming, for over 100 people responding that the walls, as planned, need a better solution. We're requesting the following. Number one, stop all work. Number two, form a five-person committee to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen how to render a better solution. Thank you for advancing your consideration, Jonathan H. Dowding. Okay, can somebody inform me what the Alton Bay Community Group is?
I sure hope not. It's a faith occupation.
Okay, thank you. I'm not aware of the group.
My opinion on this.
Oh, yeah.
My opinion is, we had the public hearing on it. Allow them to finish the work, and if they want to change anything, have them put a warrant article together and put it in front of the people.
We've already stopped work once. And so, we stopped work, we'd like to continue just to get things finished up and try to...
We held the public hearing on this.
Yes, we did.
We had two people show up. That's when they should have come out, come in and looked at the print and said yes or no. And they all chose not to come in. And it went in front of them with a warrant article in front of the delivery session, and it passed. I think it should be finished, and if they want to have it changed or changes to it, then they can get together, make up a warrant article, and put it in front of the people again.
So, being a new kid on the block again, I was involved in it a little bit in the beginning. I think we got some egg on our faces, this board, I'm sorry, out in the public.
Do we have egg on our faces?
I don't know. Let me jam it. The project did not go well. I'm not blaming the board, but it didn't go well. And it hasn't gone. And it's sitting there right now. That's a sore, that's a serious sore to this town. I'm sorry, that's the bait on it. Now, a couple of weeks ago, this board, well, a month and a half ago, this board voted to finish the project. I voted that. I think I made a mistake because there it sits, it's not being finished. And right here in this package you got here, I suggested that we, as a board, notify GMI when they're going to fix this thing, when they're going to start the work. And there's two projects they're responsible for there. There's a private wall we've asked to have fixed, and our wall. And I've been told different things, different reasons, but we have to do something. This is the middle of July. We don't even know when they... We don't have the foggiest idea when they're coming back. And I've learned one thing since I've been a Selectman here and been to Selectmen's meetings. I brought up issues, and I've been told they will be taken care of. But I never get when they're going to be taken care of. So from now on, that's going to be part of my questions, is when. And I think tonight, we should address that issue of when they're going to be, should be giving them some kind of a letter.
You see, we all had a chance to say...
Well, I didn't know it was my turn to talk. I didn't say something.
I apologize.
You just...
No, I thought you...
I went in with Virgil, I'm sorry. I just...
Right, Mr. Rochelle.
Since the beginning, since I became Selectman, since the beginning, I've stressed my opinion on the wall, that I was disappointed in its outline. So I've talked to a lot of people, I've talked to people, I've even spoken to Mr. Dowding about this wall. But I've also thought, when we put the cease and desist, that we could try to get it resolved, to try to do something a little different with the top of it, to make it look better. From what I understand, it's a Michi Claus that it couldn't be done. Not in a way that I was thinking of putting a three-foot railing on top. And I have to agree with Rob. We started work again, we said, okay, let's get it done, and it's nothing has happened. We sent letters to GMI, we've been trying to get in contact with them, when are you coming back? The best of my knowledge, they had a front end lawyer come out at one point, it was there for a few days, they took it away, they were going to resume work, and they left. I have no idea why they left. We need to get it done. It's a safety issue, it's an eyesore, and we do need to take care of it and come up with a solution later on down the road to make it more appealing to the eyes and to the townspeople, and still maintain it safe. As it stands right now, it looks incomplete, and people are upset about it.
Anybody else before I say?
I feel that we had told GMI to cease work, and I think we were sort of in agreement in the past to go lenient on them, because when they did that, they then had other projects to do. So they weren't in a position to tell us exactly when they'd be back, but I think time has gone by enough now that we should pressure them for when it's going to be done.
Or is someone...
Mr. McDonald? I don't think we have egg on our face with that, because we had the public hearing that showed that wall and everything. Two is, I wish to make a motion that we do not write another check to GMI for that until we get a signed engineering print for where they went over the ledge and stuff. Because that wall is not pinned down there, and they said they had it engineered, and I would like to see an engineered sign on it and a print in this office. I mean, for them coming back, they're in their busy season. We stopped it, they were coming back in the spring when we had to stop work on it. You go on a list, and when they get down to that project, they'll be shipping in, but you can't drop everything scheduled. And this is a busy year. They did come back, and then it pulled out.
There was reason for that. Now, I'm going to let Mr. Roberts explain that here, because I did ask him. He actually came and he told me why. The loader was there, and then why it got pulled out, so I'll let him have that. I'll have that on the next week's agenda, a motion to vote for engineered stamp.
Do it right now.
Because that's not... I'm just addressing Mr. Downing's letter, so that's a little bit above and beyond the issue of that. I'd just like to stick to Mr. Downing's issue.
Well, I think we need to have a signed print that says it was engineered.
We have that on next week's agenda.
Stay there.
Thank you.
Anybody else before I say?
First, when I saw the wall way above, as big as it was, and the picture I saw of what the wall would look like at other places, didn't look that. When I saw ours, it was a big contrast. But over the year, it has grown on me. It has blended in. I have no problem with that wall. The problem I have is, and I did it once before, but a few years ago, when Old Royal Hill Road got redesigned, make everyone turn in by the village door, you see, that part there, I had my chance to come and voice my opinion, say, at least make that part one way, instead of making everybody turn in by the village door, but I didn't. So after it was done, and it all happened, I didn't feel I had the right to come down and complain, because I had my chance to put my input in for the meeting, not after all the money's been spent. Agree with Mr. McDonald saying, let's finish the job, let's get it capped off, that these folks, 100, I believe is what he put in there, or 100, so it's 100, maybe it'll be 101, 102. If I saw 3,000 names on a petition for stop work, I might give it a little more credibility, because that'd be half, more than half of the registered voters in this town. They had a chance to come in, they had a chance to talk. We haven't heard from them, that wall's been there since last fall. We haven't heard until now. So I can't agree with this letter, and the last thing this town needs is another committee. Don't agree with that.
We don't either.
Don't believe it's no argument. As far as GMI, it's too bad they have not moved that. They're in their busy season, we have to remember. We're the ones that gave Steve stop work orders. As a contractor, as a contractor, I've been one, you're one, Virgil's been one. Someone tells you, I don't want any more work, I'm having to change a plan, I don't know what I'm going to do, say, well, you've got to realize, once I leave, I don't know when I come back, when you want me back. So that's what we did to GMI. So to have them say, I'll be back here on this day, I can't hold in that, because we're the ones that stopped the job, and then we're turning around and saying, let's just finish it the way it was designed. So if any eggs on our face, that's the egg that's on my face is doing stop work or agreeing to stop work early this year. Was there a good reason for it? Yes, we thought there was. Then we just changed our mind, let's get it done. And I'd do the same thing. If they want to change this wall after it's been bid up, let them get a petition, let them put the amount of money they feel is going to take to tear that down, put the white wall back into where it has to be. Because one of the things was the cost of doing it, and nobody putting a bid in. The bid came in, it was just too high, and I think the town went back twice to ask money for this. That's why the west side has not been done, because the amount of money that was raised right at the... It was 20,000, 5,000 was put on that, 5,000 of that got used mistakenly. Nobody was showing up for the job. The one company we had, I think it came in around $85,000, $90,000, it was just a rep...
Appointed.
Just a rep. We all thought that was assed along. Sorry that some folks don't like the way it looks. I think it needs to stay as it is. I guess that's my opinion generally. So at this one, I'm going to ask Mr. Roberts to tell you why the loader came and why the loader lied.
Yeah, the loader came back, they were trying to squeeze us in between two jobs. They figured they could do it in seven days. Unfortunately, I had some problems on the job that they were on, they weren't able to complete to get us in the middle of it. And they're still looking for an opening of five to seven days to get us in some one of the big jobs that they've got going on. I mean, only over like $13,000. It's not the biggest job that we have, but they are trying to squeeze us in. GMI has always done very well for us, has come to, you know, RA more times than once. So unfortunately, we stopped it in the spring when they were ready to come back, and now we're in the dilemma that we're at. So even the highway department went down and cleaned up what we did, and cleaned up what we could, and blocking it off, that's all we could do. They commented about the engineering as well. The wall is engineered, so when it got raised up because of the ledge, the engineer was called Huiz Michi Claus, and he approved the raising of the wall as long as we put the ripper app in front of it. So that was the okay that we got from the engineer, Michi Claus.
That's what I'm saying, is if he engineered it, though, pinning those to the ledge, then I think we need a signed print.
It's a freestanding wall, it didn't need to be pinned. I'll talk to him.
I just think we need, we should have a print of it in here.
Anybody else, Mr. Roberts?
To comment on private wall, if in fact they're going to apply for that, you've got to understand that the private wall takes 75, at least 75 days to concede. It's not guaranteed, because there was never a commitment to the wall.
Right.
He asked me to raise their hands and say, we don't have to be able to do it, we don't have to be able to put it back up, we don't know that yet. So until they get to that point, I have been able to talk to them, because they've been pretty tied up.
Sure, this is the middle of their season. This is the middle of their season.
Okay, so is it the consensus in this board that the Board of Selectmen do not agree with this letter to set up a stop the work, and also not to start a five-person committee?
Yes.
Yeah, Phil?
Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Holt? Holt, reservation's on hand.
Stane? I'll see where committees are made.
Can I have a motion then to deny the request of Mr. Jonathan Downing's quest to stop all work and form a five-person committee to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen how to render this solution? Can I have a vote of do not approve? This is made by Ruben Whitworth, not to approve the request of Jonathan Downing, second by Mr. McDonald. Further discussion, I'll hold the board.
Yes, sir.
I want to vote against it, because I don't think we discussed it enough. I don't think the issue has been taken care of. The wall is still in limbo, even tonight.
How will they vote you?
I know that. But the committee might be able to get this out of. We had a problem, the bay, we had a roof on a bandstand, two years never got done. I came to a few Selectmen's meetings, brought it up a few times, it finally got done. But then, we wanted to do some work on the bandstand, we formed a committee. I'm just... And it worked out well, it worked out very well. But we've had, we've had two projects in the last two years that haven't run well. I'm sorry. People out there, I don't know where you people, I've heard this, we've got to do something with that wall, we weren't doing nothing with it. You form a committee, it might work, it might not. Which committee had been formed earlier?
Mr. McDonald?
I hear you. Before you say we had a bad project on that roof on that bandstand, look at the bid on it, because that was depending on ice. That's why it was two years, and they waited on the metal shingles, were special art. That's why that took two years, because of the ice on the first year. That was the first year.
The issue is not at hand with the bandstand.
The second one of the roof went off.
Gentlemen, the issue is not at hand on the bandstand on the wall. The issue right now is our request from Mr. Downing. Like to go back to that if we could. Motion has been made, and there's been a second by Mr. McDonald, is there any further discussion?
Just a point to bring up. I was out in the bay in a boat recently, and a constituent was in the boat with me who praised the wall, thought it looked great, and she's lived in the town her entire life.
Any further discussion? I'll hold the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
No.
Mr. Whitworth, yes. Four, four, one against, motion passed. If we could send a letter to Mr. Downing, his request denied. Okay, gentlemen, moving on from submission of public comments and question concerns, who appointments being done, we'll move on to new business. Water Bandstand Committee, Water Bandstand DES permit, and you're back at UH and Request from Nancy Arrow, the request for $400 withdrawal, Bandstand Capital Reserve Fund, the funds we use for a DES permit. I don't think we need to bring Nancy on at this point, it's pretty straightforward what they're requesting, this is the replace underneath it on the one corner. Mr. Rochelle, come on, anything you might have, because he's on next week's meeting.
Yes, on this, I met with Cindy Bellis at Stony Ridge on Friday to sign the paper for the application. That's going to be for the river here. So I met with her, and that's what this is about, that river base will get that done. So that amount was $400.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve withdrawal? Yes, sir.
What's the 400 for, just the permit?
The permit.
Just for the state?
Yes.
So that's on Stony Ridge?
That's for the state, that's the application itself.
That's the application fee?
The application.
Okay, that's all I wanted. That's what I thought.
I have a motion to approve the request from the Water Bandstand Committee. A motion made by Ruben Whitworth to approve the request from the Water Bandstand Committee to withdraw $400 from the Water Bandstand Capital Reserve Fund, second by Mr. Whitman. Any further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote as the affirmative. Moving on to the Highway Department, tree removal recommendation, Range Road. See in your packet, there were three bids that were brought in, and three responded. The first one was $47,000, the second one was $24,990, third one was $46,000. But the difference between the first, third, and the second, as you can see, I did talk to Mr. Roberts about it early in the week, he had his concerns, but he went back and met with Bellnet Landscaping Company, they assured him that they will have a crane on the job, Mr. Roberts will go down and watch the job, and was tired to make sure it's all being done. If you want now, ask Mr. Roberts about it, he did have his concerns, he came to me with them, listened to the concerns. Just let you know. I'll go to Paul first.
Went down and took a look at the whole road, and all the way down to all the tree areas. Bellnet Landscape Company, they were fully understanding the full bid and what they were bidding on, correct? There's no question in my mind that that...
I called them directly, and talked to Peter, who's representing Bellnet Landscape. I said, do you realize what you've done, you know, with the bid? Told him what the difference is, I was all about the knowledge. I said, you left $20,000 on the plate, and I was questioning maybe that money on the plate. I was uneasy about the first discussion that I had with him, and told him I was, and told him that I was very disappointed in the tree company, and as long as I'm the highway manager here, they would not come back to Town of Alton, this is what you did. Talked about dropping the trees in the fields up there in the man, I said, that's not going to be accepted, it's not accepted. I'm not going in to go clean up somebody else's mess. Explained all this to Amber. Actually talked to Ruben sometime during the day about it, that I was really uneasy, even though there's $20,000 to build there, about the whole thing. It's called later on by Peter, and said they were bringing a crane in for all those big trees, but that they had dropped one by the property. I said, you understand, everything under eight inches has to be cleaned up, everything taken out of the way. I actually talked to one of the other tree companies, and one tree at the end, he said, you understand, the size of that tree is $5,000. So either they're leaving their, I don't know what to do, but we're going to watch them very closely, and they will abide by the contractor, I won't sign off on the bill.
That's a lot of money to leave on the table for a small bid. That's a lot of money to leave on the table for a small bid.
A lot of money. You bid before, I bid before, and believe me, that's... And as you see, the other two bids have been very complicated. $46 and $47, that's $1,000 apart, that's kind of what we expect. Well, he stood by it, and he understood it, and he says he understands it, and they're going to stand by it, and that's when I went back to the office and said, I'll be there when it comes.
We dealt with them before, we haven't.
Never had them, so...
But they do have a good reputation in the region.
$20,000 on the plate, that's guaranteed that I'll be proud when they're done.
You know, I mean, I read the paperwork over, you know, spells it out here, what is he going to do? He's, I believe, he is a certified arborist, I mean, he's got his own stuff here. I don't know if he made a mistake or what. If he bites the bullet, he lives up to it. Go for it.
Roberts, they give him a chance to back out of the bid. He asked if he'd back out of the bid, and I said, he would bother him. So he had his chance to back out of it, but he didn't.
It was like the wall again, you had a contractor back out of that bid.
Gentlemen, I'm waiting for your pleasure. I'm going to read it to you this time. Mr. Chairman?
We approve Bellnet Landscaping Company of Gilford for $24,990. Estimated time is September 15th. The tree removal on Range Road as presented.
Second. Mr. Holt, approve the, to award the bid to Bellnet Landscape Company of Gilford, New Hampshire, $24,990 for Range Road tree removal as per presenting the bids. Second by Mrs. McDonald, I'm going to open up discussion. Being none, I'm going to go to Mr. Roberts.
I just want to comment, that date has been moved up to June 20th, but July 20th.
July 20th. The motion thrown out. Motion will show that Mr. Roberts has stated that date has been moved up to July 20th. Any further discussion? Those in favor, I'll hold the board. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes, vote as the affirmative. Moving on to the Highway Department, number one, number two, number three is going to be the easement, the Depot Street spur, and you're back at the easement, presented to us by New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, from New Hampshire, and also from the Union Telephone Company, Seventh Century Street, Armington. Asking for an easement, down where we talked showed last week, where the poles will be moved to, the easement so they cut trees, anything that lemons or anything might impair their ways of being dangerous to the telephone lines or other individuals within their lines. Mr. McDonald?
That back pole down there, Ken, do we own the backside of that back pole? That's up in there yet, we can't give an easement on that.
You talked about where they're putting the new pole, Virgil?
Yeah, it's back, but that 15 feet's going to be in the other people's yard.
We own that.
15 feet?
No, we own the, we own all the way to that stone wall.
They're putting one right up by the stone wall, towards his gateway.
Sidewalks, both, two guys.
We do own the 15 feet on each side of that, the poles, even the one in the back.
Anybody else? I have a motion to approve the easement. So, Mr. Whitman? And Mr. Holt? Any further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ruben?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is four, four, one against.
You can sign this now, right?
Next one is going to be grounds and maintenance, being in River Park Trail Park. See in your packet, there's a letter from Kelly Trundle, from Parks and Rec Director. Skip over. Nice skip over, Paul.
Yes, you did.
Oh, excuse me. Highway Department, Avery Hill, what I should say, Mr. Roberts, hopefully I passed on. Okay, Mr. Roberts, I'm going to let you just open the floor here and talk to the board about it, so we have two members that have been a part of that, and actually you got four, because Avery Hill was done when I was not here, so, Mrs. McDonald, I believe was.
Previously, when Avery Hill was done, it was requested the landowner not to put any ditches across in front of the property. So we did nothing there, and it would be taken care of the property. Since then, the property's been sold. I think in the letter that you have there, sold three years ago, four years ago? And what's happened is there's some erosion going on, as well as there's wheel rust beginning in the roadway, which don't help much. We put stone in rather than gravel or anything, we cleaned up everything on the other side, as you see where it was done by the fence, he allowed us to put a ditch line down through there. So that's pretty much taken care of now. He actually sent an email to us, saying that, and the last heavy rains and everything seem to be working fine. to be working fine. So, for now, it's working fine.
That's down along the fence? That's where it's...
That's where the ditch ended up.
Is there a water bar that goes off before that fence at all? Do we have an easement for any, shut any water off of those bushes that are just over there? I haven't gone up to look at the site, so...
So prior to the driveway, what you see is the washout, and then the gravel in the driveway, that's where they put all the stone. And then it goes down across the front of the stone wall, and then it goes to that fence area, the last piece, on the left-hand side of the house, and then it drains off towards the small.
And you trench the whole thing all the way down?
You know, stoned a lot of, so we...
Stone washes.
...the erosion.
Stone washes out this time, because we had stone there before.
We didn't have stone, did we?
Didn't.
Have it.
What you put in for stone?
Do you have a culvert in this driveway?
I have a driveway.
Mr. Rochelle?
These pieces, obviously, that we have here, we take before you there.
Yes.
Correct. Because I drove up there and everything looked pretty clean, looked pretty good, so I didn't see it in this condition.
Yes.
But has you since been up there and taken care of this, and he was satisfied with the outcome?
Yes.
Roberts? Mr. Holt?
What did you put with stone in?
I think I have a mixture of three-quarter, no, three-quarter inch and a half.
No, I was just curious, I haven't seen it, no, sorry.
Sorry. If any more salt washes down and comes over those rocks, what would be the alternative solution to this? Catch basin and bury culvert, or is enough room between the road and the stone wall even, do you think about doing that? If we were to rebuild that section, that's what it would have taken before, as we realize now, prior to Avery Hill Road, we used as many catch basins as possible for the water and ground to reduce that type of situation. Everything's out of the town right away, though, the wall's out of the town right away, it's right on the line. Do we know? I don't think we have a survey for Avery Hill Road that showed it. I mean, I live on a downhill slope, up in hill, like, you know, quite a bit of sand. Every time, it was very low to gravel, it was a very slope right in front of my garage, and I dig it, that's what I think, so I live on a hill, that's going to happen to me. I understand a lot of salt coming down, and wanting to have something done about it. Seems like this is not, well, you know. So, gentlemen, you want to wait and see what happens over the next two months with the rain and what goes on?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, if he was satisfied with the outcome of what you have just done, and maybe the answer is to wait and see how, or until the next month or two.
Because of the way the email was sent to me, just the reason it came to the board, I wanted the board to understand that we wanted to ditch, and that whole side of the road, and the previous landowner said, no, he would take care of it. That's the reason it was not ditched. I just wanted the board to understand that with this complaint is that, if the landowner didn't want that...
That's why I thought we were going to ditch it. That's why I thought we were going to ditch it, because we were going to do it in the beginning. So if this landowner ain't going to take care of it, then we ought to be ditching it.
Some point we'll have to, but it almost has to be a paved ditch swale going down through there. A culvert going into the driveway? Or a water bar?
Gentlemen, it's a pleasure of the board to see if this takes care of satisfaction of the homeowner with the rocks that are there, and Mr. Roberts will monitor it over the next two months?
Yes.
Will it, he gets on the letter back to the homeowner, I'm going to say to Mr. Roberts, say we're not, it's not, it's a stone down, inch and a half stone, and three-quarter inch, and so far it's working. This is satisfactory, Highway Department, it's done, Mr. Roberts will monitor it for the next two months. And the motion, this is a consensus on there. Against the board, is that right, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. So now we'll move on to grounds and maintenance, Beane and River Road Park, Trail Park. Mr. Roberts still going to continue with this on this one, because his name is mentioned in these letters going back and forth, highlighted. I think Kelly and Kenny Knight, and asking us, and Mr. Devers asking us to supply us with the butter, like, for our field, it's town property, it's town signs, and I can see that it's posted on, town has the right to go and take the signs right off.
I think we should have Kenny rip the signs out and put up a signed public pack. As to me, I want to start a warrant article next year anyways, change Jenny Park, open up that end like it should have been, and close the other end off, and put the lawn right up within three feet of the building.
Talk about that another time. But Rochelle?
You originally put the poles up to stop vehicles from going into the pathway? Did you originally put the poles up, and there was nothing on them at the time?
Well, I actually used to live there.
Right.
To back up a little bit. And there were signs there in the beginning, and the previous owner, the Jim, put them up, and I had a discussion with the previous owner about that, and they were taking them down. Because it is town property, it's part of the area, right of it. Then what happened several times, people were backing up over the walkway. So we put a few poles up, and then they drove between the poles, still parking there. So then we put a whole lot more poles up, just keep them in between, you know, so they bring back over. Then, after I moved, all of a sudden, all these signs appeared. Parking for unit thirty-six B, blah, 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 no parking, Jim parking only, it's all, it's all on town, not through the car. So John Devers had contacted me, I talked to John, you know, so I had more news come up, he's the one that's actually the expert on the right of way for the railroad. Twelve feet, I had someone at the town of Alton. Other side of the signs, it was left there for parking for people to park. The people had parked there and gone down to walk down to the playgrounds from there, on the trail. And I said to John, I said, maybe the best thing we can do is put up a guardrail. With steel, on the ground, they won't move it, they'll still be able to park there, but then we have to look at, like, about moving off. All the landowners, that they cannot post signs, try to do this public parking, first come, first served. I would put a guardrail from fence, all the way to Wolf Road, and then nobody could go onto that. My suggestion.
I'd like to see a public parking sign in there, because if you pull in there and park, people come out screaming at you. If you pull in even that little, you've got the dog leg sticking out there, you... They all think it's private parking in there. I'd like to see a sign right up there, public park.
Mr. Board's pleasure. I agree with you.
I make a motion that we allow Kenny to tear down all the signs in there, and add a public parking sign, Town of Alton. Selectmen.
I think we need to take down the signs, take down the signs, take Mr. Roberts' advice in putting in a railing, opening backs out into the, into the trail.
I want to stop you there, because you made a motion.
Oh, so you were asking for input?
Well, I was, until he called for a motion. He called, he made a motion on the floor, so I got to follow through personally.
Okay.
Okay, so that we can get to this back.
I forgot to add the guardrail to the motion.
Mr. McDonald, have the private signs pulled down, and guardrail put up along the public parking signs, for order, selectmen. Yes. Second, Mr. Whitman, I'll open up the discussion, Mr. Rochelle.
So you added that, you added railings?
Yeah.
I'm all set.
I kind of snuck it in.
You snuck it in there, so...
Maybe, that's all... He worded it right for me.
Mr. Holt?
What's your intent on public parking signs or sign?
Just a sign, one sign in there, that says public park, on three signs? Okay. Just so they, for one, the owners know it, just so the owners know it, and the people that come in to use it, say, okay, this is public, you're not going to tow my vehicle.
Any discussion would be that Mr. Roberts has written, pull the signs down, for order, the board, selectmen. But the landowners be contacted, that they can pick up their signs, that Highway Department, from the Highway Secretary. Since they do want some political signs when the state of New Hampshire picks them up, you go to the state shed.
Yeah, they go to state shed, or something.
I'm doing that one step for courtesy for the property owners, that they can back, pick up the signs, and also inform them that that is public parking, not private parking. Is that agreeable to you folks?
Yes.
A motion has been made, and second, and discussion, and further. Those in favor? I'll hold the board, excuse me, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I think we got, I thought we had a public character.
Me too.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Both as the affirmative. Moving on to, and Kelly, if you were sitting there waiting by to chime in or help us out with this, thank you for standing by. In case you heard me, there, Josh. All right, next item is going to be number six, bay parking, selectmen, Holt.
Uh, I'm going to let you off early tonight on this one, Mr. Chairman, as I'm looking into more avenues. I had, I had two complaints, I just give you a ballpark to your...
What was it in the ballpark?
What I'm interested in.
No, I was looking for it in the ballpark.
No.
Okay.
Uh, it's referenced the fines for parking, the bay, and time of parking in the bay, especially on the east side. And also, well, the fines, I'm looking at a couple different towns around with the same type.
This time you want to bring back up the latest?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'll notify Mary, who'll probably be not next meeting, I'll meet after. And I'll put a little packet together for selectmen.
Number six has been postponed to a further date. Number seven, Route Twenty-Eight Cemetery, Mr. Rochelle?
It's been brought to my attention, and a couple people complained of Route Twenty-Eight Cemetery, grass being very brown while the, while, while the sprinklers on, in bad shape, looking like a gravel pit. Things haven't been done in a few years, and very, very disappointed individuals, and I thought maybe we could touch on it a little bit, as to what we have done. We have had a drought, very dry spell, it's been difficult to keep everything watered efficiently, but that these were some of the complaints of that Riverside Cemetery looks good, but Twenty-Eight, Route Twenty-Eight Cemetery looks very, very shattered.
The area, as you know, so last year we had that warrant article, gene area, that still is very worth upon. So those plans, and that is not much more, that I can see the town would be spending money. We did go last year, it picks up around the, oh, area, we put the seed in. As far as the watering go, we'd have to ask Liz to contact the department and see if there's a problem with water, or if the well can't handle it.
Well, do we have irrigation in the new pack, Kenny? You know, do we have irrigation in there yet?
It's sprinklers, they...
It's just sprinklers and holes, I believe. If I'm not mistaken, that's what I've seen in past, I could be wrong.
I don't, I can't remember if there's any type of irrigation in there at all yet.
I know it was a year ago that we went in there to discuss it, about having engineer, I mean, an engineer in the whole cemetery to operate, and I know Mr. Roberts went in and did some seeding.
That's our engineer.
I don't know where it's, I don't know where that stands right now, because Mr. Roberts, his department's been so busy, and I haven't talked the list about it, considering we're out of that, it's probably something else that has to be worked on this year.
Yes.
So I, I don't believe I can give you an answer on it, with everything going on that they've had to face this year, I don't think it's been put right to the top of the list.
Not during the state of emergency.
It's on the list, just ain't got to...
But that's what I had mentioned, it was on the list, and it may be worked on in these days' daytime.
And you haven't been instructed from selecting to do anything on it either.
Right, on that side, no, I mean, I still have the list that, what I thought about, and I, we all met there, and I told you exactly what the list is, what I thought should be done. Maybe you just put that together in a bid package to a, for an engineer, that would be targeted for the board to value, when I handle that, and then you'll have to interview engineers, see if they come back with, they have to come up with their own thoughts of what they, how they think needs to be done.
I'm sorry, I was, I guess I was under the impression that we had done that. I was under the impression that we discussed it that day, and that we were going to look into an engineer.
We waited for the warrant article to pass in March.
Right.
And we had to wait for that, and then March fifteenth, the state of emergency, layers and everything.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you're right.
No, we didn't tell them, can't act on it any further that night, because we didn't have the money.
No, but we discussed what could be done, and I know Mr. Roberts went a few days later and did some landscaping seeding, some seeding, and put in some trees, which I think later on didn't make it, were pulled out, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, they, they were bushes that were pulled up and transplanted, yes, but without the watering down there, that was hard to keep them going.
And I think that's mostly the concern, is the, the grass being so dry.
Check with the cemetery department, see if you could find out for us.
You also mentioned the gravel pile, stone pile, so forth. This has been a thorn in my side for over two years. Brought it up before, brought it up at a selectmen's meeting, I brought it up as a budget committee member, and I was told at that time, it would be taken care of. Twice. Still there.
So I, I just don't approve. What the board of selectmen said last year, until we figure out what the town's going to do there, instead of spending any more money, it's wasting money, figure out what we're going to do there. This is a project that the town never wanted, the cemetery trustees themselves, back then, decided they'd buy this piece of property, they started hauling out, never looked into it, never had any plans for it, then stuck to Highway Department, with the task, the selectmen did, I was on board, and were digging out, pulling the gravel, and they did pull some gravel off, they used some of the roads, but the rest of the gravel was left there, it's understanding, was to bring it down, slope it down towards Twenty-Eight, leave an uphill there, so you could, they could raise it up toward Ray. And Mr. Roberts told, until he got a direction, he bought a selectman, which way to go on engineering, what he thought could be done now. They didn't want to do any more, and then there was the lone pile that was up back there to cover the gravel that they were going to slope down. If I'm not mistaken, if I'm remembering this conversation, maybe Ken or Virgil or Paul can help me.
Yeah, no, you're right.
With some gravel crushing too.
I have a, right. The, okay, we still got to dig more out of there in the back, right? More's got to come out, going back.
Yes.
Should consider that, put it in the roads, get it ready for next year's roads. It just saves us, gives us more money for paving, more money for where we own it.
Mr. Roberts? And I want to recall the, part of the list from memory. Because one is, you don't want to give up the access that we have that goes to the, the other one. A question about whether or not the stone wall that's in front of the old section, it doesn't continue in front of the new section, do you build that? This is all the engineering question. We had, the state of New Hampshire was willing to give us all the pipes to run all the drainage system across, down in front of it, and tie it into the cross culvert that's there. Also, that it has to be probed, six feet deep all the way back to do a burial, till we find where the ledge line is, and then the ledge line would determine whether or not, how much material can come out the back. Back of the existing maintenance shed today is ledge.
Right.
So it's right on the surface, so there's no burials can be made to the left-hand side of that road, and back of the maintenance shed, that has already been done.
Unless, last.
Unless we do something different. So that's the question for the engineer. And the only thing I had said is, that material there, I would not remove from the cemetery, is that maybe the six feet that you need to put back in, or, depending on where the ledge lines are, that's where you would put more of the column burial.
Right.
That's what should have been done originally, if they had figured out where the ledge line was, to put the column burial on top of the ledge line, where you don't have to go deep.
That, it's not that we was probed down there, they didn't do no, um.
No borings.
Borings or anything.
No borings, nothing was done. To understand, I don't think Bob was here then, but to understand with everything, this was all done during the winter after we finished roadway, closed it down where we couldn't do any more roadway. I've been up there knee-deep in snow cutting trees with the rest of those guys and I think doing the stuffing and everything else that was done and separating the big bowlers out, breaking through the frost and doing as much as we could. That's all that was done, but it was after the roadway was done, we moved into there until the snow got to be too much and then we were on a snow removal course. The, the highway department did with spare time work that we filled in on. We're not, we weren't full-time at the cemetery to create any. A lot of things is we did get a price on the loom, it all should be screened, it all should be set aside. Right now, it's just a big mountain. We dug up to 33 inches of loom out the ground in the front. All that had to be filled back in with good material. And we compacted all that good material we put down front, so it's good material that we have in play.
How much money do you think we saved by using some of that material?
In, within the cemetery.
Gravel and stone and stuff, even on our roads.
Yeah, the only thing that the town took out was some of the three-inch stuff in the original, the original grindings, and we did all the stone. After that, we didn't do that.
We took the crushed stone and stuff out.
Originally, the three-inch, we did take that sitting in the pit, we've been utilizing. Take any more out because we didn't know how much material you're really gonna need on site. And that's what the mountain of what you call stone in the front is, is you don't know where you're gonna utilize that. Nothing to the left-hand side of the entry road to more, to the column barrier, nothing to the left has been done, and the town owns a good piece to the left of that, so none of that's been dug out and filled back in.
Yeah, we have to wait for it to end.
Existing well that was for the farm, seeing how many gallons permitted that you can get out of it and whether or not it could be tied to a sprinkler system. So there's still a lot of phases to this. You know, and that's where we decided to have an engineer come in and actually map out some of these phases. Board of Board to say, this is where we need to go, now you need to put it up a bit to find out where it's at. That. Discussion together on paper to send it out, to see if we get an engineer to come in and take a look at it and tell him what we're looking for and what his thoughts are.
Expect, right?
Yeah.
Expect.
Yeah, like I said, it's basically outlining what we want done.
But that would be very good.
Yes.
Maybe we can send it to the town engineer's tool?
Yeah, any engineering outfit, we all do.
I think that would be fun. I would think they would give us a little break, I would hope.
Would like Mr. Roberts to put it down on paper.
Yes.
You had a complaint to us last year, there was also the buried electrical lines that had to be buried all the way up. We talked about that too, and that's right at the very edge of the line.
Right.
Between the two pieces going together, and that was a, remember, I. New Hampshire stuff. Mr. Roberts, spare time, would you like to have him do a request proposal?
Yes. Next bit.
So minute, minute to the Board of Selectmen for the review before it goes up.
Yes.
To make a consensus from the board if I can ask for permission.
Yes, and I think we should get it ready for engineering.
Joe, Mr. Holt? Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
This letter?
Actually, you're being, get that to us.
This letter's gonna get it ready to be sent out for engineering?
You're gonna bring in his proposal, what he's looking for, request proposals, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna fill it just like we were with the bid tree specifications.
That would be very helpful.
You have to remember, we have a certain money to work in, I think it was 50,000, was it?
Uh, yes, I think 50 or 55, yeah.
Yeah, that's for the engineer.
Okay, moving on to old business. Oh, I'm sorry, number eight, Spur Paddle Company.
This was brought to my attention by a couple of people in the bay. It's called, uh, S U P Sub, New Hampshire. Paddle Board Company, they're right alongside the Alton Bay Post Office.
In the old blue jet.
Correct. And, um, there's two issues. One issue with putting orange cones directly on the sidewalk. People can't pull in and park and get into the mail box and get into the post office. People are driving over the cones.
So we don't, we can't touch that.
Let, let Paul, let Paul bring up this concern.
I realize it's state, I realize it's state, I don't know if we need to go to the state with this. Um, but these cones are, are right on the edge of the road, almost in front of the stairway. People are driving over the cones, and they're putting the cones there so they can pull their truck up and load up the paddle boards and go down. They used to go over to Downing Landing and bring the paddle boarders over there and dunk them in over there. Recently, they've been seen going down the boat ramp next to shivvies, tying up people, getting people down there with their paddle boards, getting people set up at the bottom of the boat ramp and then taking off. So people are having to wait to dunk in their boats or go in and out publicly. This is a, this is a business. Um, so a few people have been starting to complain, some of the paddle boards have been left on the embankment on either side of the, uh, itself. So this was brought to my attention, I thought I'd mention it and see if there's, at least if we could talk to them. I understand they're running out of places to be able to dunk in, not being able to dunk in at the beach or Downing Landing, but now they're, they're utilizing the public boat ramp.
I guess at, at this point, what I would suggest, we turn this over to Mr. Devers in the planning board, planning department, and look into it a little bit further. It would be nice if we could have a letter of concern written into the, to the Board of Selectmen on this. Not saying that they're not coming to you, not, not, I mean, Mr. Holt, but it would help the building inspector more. And I think it would help the town better.
Well, I know.
Let me, let me finish you first. If there's a safety hazard, something like that, fully agree, no problem. But I, I think this has to do more with the, um, coenforcement officer, the planning department then, for, for the first step before it go, before we get, Mr. McDonald.
I know Snubby got a ticket with the mail truck down there.
Crosswalk.
The entrance down. They're blocking the entrance down there, we can send the police department down there and move the cones, because you cannot block that, it's a federal building. And that's what got Snubby on.
Snubby, Snubby was on the crosswalk.
He was just before the crosswalk.
Oh, he was on the crosswalk.
He was on the crosswalk. He was waiting up, he was away by the mouth mail box.
But I, I feel it should be turned over to Mr. Devers in the planning department, let them look into it and have their, have them resolve it at that point, if it can't be resolved, that will have to come to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Holt?
I frequent that post office, I run the cones over, uh, because they're not supposed to be.
They're not.
And, uh, I think our police department can handle that, that little issue.
I hope you don't run the ones over by the crosswalk, I think they're not supposed to be there either, but they're there to protect kids from crossing the road, so I hope you don't drive over those.
No, but I, I have no idea myself, or I've been told by many people that just drive right over.
And that's the.
You're admitting.
Okay.
And our police department.
It belongs, I believe it belongs to the coenforcement office first and planning department.
It does.
And do I have a consensus of that from the board? Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Mr. Whitman?
Yeah.
Mr. Lourishell?
Yes, and I'm gonna let her.
Mr. Holt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I, it's, I, I have people coming in all the time, I bring up the meeting, but on something, some of these concerns, if we have a letter, that's just gonna help us even better. I know a lot of people don't wanna do it because they don't wanna sign it because they want them to even know that they're complaining, but we do have them come in all the time, which we have next week's meeting. That, but that would be great if we could. Or have them call the town administrator directly and she can deal with it from there, that would be another ideal. If we could. And I like it that they're coming to you guys because.
I'm sorry, I thought that was part of our job.
No, it is, it is, I'm, I'm not complaining, Paul, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining, I'm, I'm not complaining.
But. Yeah, Paul, we were gonna, that's, people have to write to us.
There's, there's a process in place, it's been in place for a while, to have a complaint being writing.
But I, and I do, when I was there, I go right to her director and said, this is a complaint I got, can you look into it?
Right.
If she doesn't even look into it, call me back to you, then I bring it to you guys. Her on the hot seat. But that's the way I do it, and you guys do whatever you want, you're right, that's what you elected to do, follow concerns and everything else, I'm not complaining.
Okay.
It was sounded that way, I'm sorry.
No, no. We can do it all.
All right, moving on, anything else on this, I wanna move on to old business? No parking, Route 11, it should say Route 11 guardrail, not the city view.
What was that parking lot up there, New Hampshire Forestry?
Yes, and they are on the line, one, possibly two people are on the line to, to, in this discussion.
Maybe they'll give us a decision to.
I didn't really think there was a bunch of discussion, I was agreeing a whole hundred percent what the New Hampshire DOT stated and move on to there because we had discussed the discussions.
But that don't settle the problem, we either gotta extend that parking lot or have New Hampshire DOT put walkways behind the guardrails, so people ain't walking down that road. The DOT go up there and build a walkway behind their guardrails.
Well, then I think that's up to us.
Or have the forestry extend that parking lot somehow.
Well, I think that's up to us to contact our state representative, saying maybe DOT needs to extend the walkways or something, but our whole issue with this was no parking along any guardrail whatsoever. That's what we've asked for, that's what the DOT is granting us as long as the police department forces no parking.
Right.
We want to ask the forest department to extend their parking or for the DOT to find a place off-road for parking, that's another issue. But, and, and as far as I'm. Parking right now, and I think that's what we should prove, not extend it out any further.
But we're also creating a problem because DOT's right, they're gonna pack farther down the road and they're gonna be walking in that road.
They're gonna be walking on the shoulder, what it says, no parking.
On the shoulder?
It should say that no walking, no parking on any paved surfaces right along that whole corridor. That was, uh, the only reason they were work, walking in the roadway, because they were all parked in the, in the shoulder to begin with. That's why they were walking in the road. It still comes to the point is people have to be responsible in their own actions.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You can't protect them from everything.
Yeah, baby, so.
And I, I think, one, I think Mount Major is overused. I think the forestry society, and then they're on the phone, you can bring them on, I feel they're negligent and letting it be overused. They're overusing the Jesus Valley Road now, and they're parked up there, they're going up the backside.
And I think they.
And they all wanna talk about nature, well, let me finish. They all wanna talk about nature, how we're gonna protect it, but yet they've abused this trail system for the last three months and have lost stopping. bikers go up there, they throw the trash down and they gotta re-sneak it. So they can't tell me they're a hundred percent behind nature if they haven't taken, resolved their own situation, they're in their own problems. We're trying to do it for safety reasons only, keeping the clo, shoulders clear so people can walk the side.
Right.
But it's up to the town to resolve the forestry's problem. If this was a business and this was the year, what would the town do?
Shut it down.
They go and say, you gotta expand the parking lot and do something. At this point, seeing I've raised my voice and my concerns a little bit, I'm gonna let the forest department in at this point.
It, you have a copy of an email from the police chief, uh, because, uh, this discussion is on enforcement. I had a discussion with the chief today. He told me that they regularly patrol that area anyways and take care of violators, so they would be happy to continue to do that.
I'd like to make a little steal, I'll open up the rest of the board to have something real quick to say before I turn it over to the folks on the forestry society.
We don't dare, you'll be yelling again.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing physically, it's talking about littering.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought of it.
Mrs. McDonald got me over by this.
And they put on.
It's the DOT letter that we're discussing, you guys are.
Yeah, they, they made Red Road, but it ain't really advertised.
Maybe another discussion or something on each other's issue.
I, I think, I think we need to have another discussion on parking issues at Mount Major parking area, along Red Road, Jesus Valley Road, and up on Alt Mountain, where visitors go to hike trail system. And it is, but a lot of it, which is protected by the society of the forest. But tonight, this is right, we got off the stance there, I'm a little suited. We, we have, do we agree with the no parking ban on Route 11 along the guardrail, what we proposed to the state of New Hampshire and that the whole police department will do the enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Need a motion of that effect.
Make a motion that we ask the state to put up the no parking signs along the guardrails on Route 11 and have the police department patrol it.
Second. Yes, I still want them on so we can set up another time, we can discuss the other issues, we could have taken, just wait a minute. Motion is made by Mr. McDonald to go ahead and approve that all parking along Route 11 corridor of Mount Major area. So the whole police department guaranteed that they will do the enforcement. Taken by Mr. Whitman, was it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Lourishell?
Yes.
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 Mr. Whitman, yes, both from the affirmative. And who do I have a pleasure to talk to tonight from, uh, New Hampshire Protection Society Forests?
Yeah, my name is Jack Savage.
Jack Savage.
Jack Savage.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can now.
Thank you very, okay, good, thank you.
As you heard, you just heard our concerns from a couple of us, especially me. I would like to set up a time.
Yeah, no.
Like to set up. Go ahead, sir.
Um, yeah, we'd be happy to meet with you and talk further about this, we share some of your same concerns. Um, and, you know, the issue ultimately for us is we have difficulty metering the number of people who go up there if they can park up and down the road. Um, and, you know, we could, we could close that parking lot and it still would be a problem because of the parking on the road. So I, I think one of the things that we wanted to convey tonight was that we're on the same page as you guys, I think, in terms of wanting to see parking reduced along Route 11, uh, DOT clearly wants enforcement. Um, we understand that that means that there can, that's gonna lead to other issues. If they don't park there, what's gonna happen? And I think we can convince some of our stakeholders, um, you're not the only ones working on, in the bell naps and on the trail system, to try to address some of those problems, they're not necessarily easily solved, but we're, uh, we're here tonight to tell you that we think we're on your side and, and ready to try to figure this out.
Well, that's, that's great to hear, and I'm sorry, the first impression coming, you heard me going on a rampage. But every now and then I do that, I try to come back around a little bit.
Well, it doesn't mean the. It doesn't mean you were entirely wrong about some of the things.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, so we'll have the town administrator get back and touch you folks at a later date, maybe we can discuss this, see how we can resolve some of the musicians.
That would be great, we'd welcome the opportunity.
All right, sir, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll move on to Roberts Cove, it says, like, the chair, I went, where, basically what this has to do is because Mr. McDonald last week brought up the concern about access to Lake Kewasaki from Roberts Cove Road. That was the other reason I asked Mr. Robinson here, because he had been part of this and he worked for Mr. Arsenal on the beach up there. I did talk to him a little bit about today, and I said, well, how about joining us tonight in meetings instead of on the phone? So, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
We have a snow fence across there, our winter, can't go out, get on the ice that we had discussed. We're doing this job to be able to not restrict the access going out on that ice to put the bomb houses out and go out to ship and moves and the islands and stuff. We're gonna mat that, like we said, we're gonna put mats across there so they can drive out, out through there.
The ice is safe and there's a good coat of snow on it, one of the posts to remove so they have access with skimobiles from the skimobile trail, and they can tow bomb houses out with skimobiles. There's no access with motor vehicles.
Why, why did we take the motor? Because when we discussed this right in the beginning, we were gonna have access for the motor vehicles going out, onto that. That was a lot of the complaints we had was the shutting down, that they wouldn't be able to get out to ship and moves and everything.
I have the easement agreement with me, but it didn't very specifically say there was no boat launching of motor vehicles to be there. All on the side. Question was given by.
No motor vehicles to be able to drive out in winter. You have that easement deal, Liz?
I do, um.
Right here, you got the.
Yeah, yeah. I see, on the bottom of page two, take this mask off, on the bottom of page, page two, number two, capital letter A, small letter I, the public may use the easement area for purposes of swimming and picnicking at the shore of Lake Kewasaki, Roman, small, roman numeral two. Access by the public shall be from Roberts Cove Road across the existing driveway for passage to the waterfront of the easement area. Don't know if that's. And then, item number three on page three is a whole list of, shall not, shall not, shall not. I don't know, I wasn't here when this was done, so I'm not sure what the intent was.
I understand that we're supposed to be able to drive out on that, and we're gonna mat where the wall was.
Everything has been highlighted minutes over there was, was one regard to putting a post in. Work would begin. Work would begin done this summer, that's what they permit, it may be filed, it won't be done until the easement is signed. Both property owners are in agreement, and one requested having a port of body there to reduce the drifts made his property.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Sydney suggested that we do that, Forest Man's Lab and Channing Down, stop vandalism.
That was done, that was like an easement amendment.
When the fall comes, as Mr. Robinson stated, the Fox and Rec gentleman goes up, pulls the post out so that snow machines add, they can get through there with the small bobhouses going by the snow machine. But it isn't wide enough for vehicle traffic.
I don't see anything in here about vehicles not being able to drive out there, I mean.
Well, I, I, but as far as going across that beach, I, I, I haven't had a chance to look at this either, but I don't, I can't say I'm gonna see anything about a mat.
But when we set, no, we had a discussion when we're doing that, and we're gonna put a mat where they, because it goes in and then drops down. And they were gonna match, so we could still have access to drive out to moves and shift. Everybody wanna be able to bring their bobhouses, because they bring them in the back of the pickups up there. And so far, we haven't got access in there, and I don't see anything in here that says you, that we can't drive the vehicles out there in the winter.
No, no, but there's nothing saying they can't.
No, nothing says we can't, it's just the property owners will need reward to accept the sign and to sign the easement. And in winter, the bobhouses and the snowmobiles will be allowed to access the lake.
When we set this up, we talked specifically about allowing the vehicles to use that.
Ken has a hand up, he has on the state, go ahead. Yeah, I'll read the signs to you. You're welcome to swim here at your own risk, the lifeguard on duty, no vehicles permitted beyond this point.
That's a town.
No smoking, no boat launching permitted, no smoking permitted, no littering permitted, no fire, fish, grills, or barbecuing permitted, dogs must be leaves. This is a public area provided by the town of Alton and the property.
That's a town sign that we put up, but we had discussed it at the meeting when we were doing this project, that we were gonna allow for winter to be able to, because we're gonna mat that, to be able to drive the bobhouses out onto the lake right there.
I don't think I was part of that one, so I, I can't.
We had, we had a lengthy discussion on that, to allow the vehicles to be able to drive out, they're gonna put mats down so we could drive over that wall and drive out. We had a lengthy discussion on it.
Minutes, go ahead.
Will get the films? You give me a copy of those films when that was.
No, we only keep them for two years and they're, they're deleted.
Not at the library anymore? Unbelievable, because you people, because they don't put every word for word in these minutes.
That's why we're supposed to. That's why we're supposed to review them and change it, we need to amend it that night, and then they have to vote on it, let's go back and review it and bend Mr. Robinson.
Okay, we have quite a few workshops on this.
I think some of the problems that were brought up with this, one is you got a short grass area, the other one is you have granite that you spent a lot of money for that retains a grass area, does have a beach. Unfortunately, they would plow this area up. I think under part of the discussion of trying to put something down for vehicles to drive across it, they would plow it in order to get vehicle traffic across it. That's why I think it was left to skimobile traffic only, because somebody's gonna either hook into the grass and rip it up. They're gonna hook into the granite and pull it out, or they're gonna put half the beach out on the lake.
This should have been said at that meeting, not, we're gonna leave access to it and then not have the access for the people, and they're all screaming.
No, they, we didn't shut off access, the post comes up, snow machines have access on wood bob, small bobhouses, not great big ones. Nothing four by fours can drive down through there, so we, we haven't denied access. I mean, they're allowing access by snow machine and with bobhouse on a small.
When we had the public meetings here for that, there was a lot of people here, because they're scared they wouldn't be able to put their vehicles out there. They were assured they would be able to drive on there and it was gonna be matted, and they would be able to get onto the lake there. And that's what these people are screaming about now, because they haven't had access out there, they could be able to drive.
So why don't they, why don't they just leave from Alton Bay and drive all the way out there?
Because you've got a reef out at the end of Black Point that they don't like to cross, you go out, when you're up on ship and moves, you come out Robert's Cove, out through by Plymouth.
I, I don't go on the lake at the winter time, I, I'm one of these guys that say ice is for glasses and highballs, it's not for me out there with the. So, no, I wouldn't walk that way. I, I wouldn't be foolish enough to walk.
I meant to reflect everything that's said, but we had a lengthy discussion on these public areas when we did this beach. And I get calls on it.
Liz has a question, Liz, Liz has a comment, I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Right, so in your packet, there's a set of minutes from November ninth, two thousand fifteen, it's highlighted, and it answers exactly what you're talking about.
Page nine, there, Ben.
It says page eight on the bottom. Eight is November ninth, two thousand and fifteen. And this coincides, this actually matches to a degree what the intent, what the easement said, which is to allow a vehicle to go from the road into the little parking lot. But then from that parking lot down to the water would be the planking or the boarding or the matting or whatever, you know, you wanna call it. For snowmobiles and bobhouses, so a snow machine would have to tow the bobhouse from the parking lot down to the edge of the water where it's ice. The date is at the bottom of the page.
Right, yeah, five years, sir.
November ninth, two thousand fifteen, page eight.
I have two pages, I got a bunch.
Yeah.
Think you're looking at the minutes, um, not the, um.
Right, minutes, yeah. It's in there, quite a few pages into the packet, it's actually third from the end.
Yeah, I got it.
And also the next to the last page, which is June first, two thousand fifteen, there's a paragraph two. And it says, snowmobiles are allowed to access through the area.
Well, nothing really says we're, we're targeted vehicles.
Already mentioned, vehicles.
Right.
Who's mentioned that, because that's what, a lot of the people come in and that's what they were worried about, is not being able to drive out there and get their bobhouse out there.
I don't argue that.
Voted, they voted to have it done and they voted for the Warren article, thinking they were gonna have access and everything.
Well, I guess if you can come up and find a safe way that the vehicles wouldn't destroy the grant, curving, grass area and everything else going over that, might consider looking at it again, but right now, I would say it stays as is.
It's just a shame, because you keep taking away, little by little, you take away all these rights that the people have around here of using that.
I'm not, I'm not taking it little by little. For the west, still have access using a snow machine to get out to the lake, we have not denied that. Still have a way to get their bobhouses out. Unfortunately, no, can they bring a camper down through there or their RV, no, they can't. Tag along camper, to me, is not a bobhouse, even though that's what the Hampshire people have turned old campers into.
Lot of the bobhouses, right at the back of the pickup truck, you drive out and then take it out of the pickup truck.
But it's just as easy to take out on a snow machine, ninety-nine percent of them have.
Ninety-nine percent, they go with four-wheelers. They slide them off the back of the trailer or the back of their truck and then they, they go down to either the public road ramp, or they go somewhere else where they can gain access and they just pull it out with snow. You know, it's, it makes sense.
We mean the worst thing the town ever did was make it a beach up there with.
I've done it both ways, you have to, I'm sure.
I always drive up there.
Okay. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this, so we can go from it, because there's nothing here, or do you wanna bring it up, change this, Mr. McDonald? Nope. Mr. Whitman?
It is what it is already.
Mr. O'Shea? Mr. Holt?
Got it.
It just stays as it is. Okay. At this time, I'll turn it over to Spike Prince to report, Mr. Holt, do you have anything to report?
No, sir.
Mr. O'Shea?
Oh, um, just the fact that we did have our meeting, um, last week, Tuesday, for the Water Van Stand Committee, and we talked about having the August fourteenth, um. Ski show, looks like that's still, I'm gonna try to take place, of course, we'll be following with the guidelines, but it looks like at this time that will be happening. And, uh, I'm sorry, that would be August twenty-second, the rain day would be the twenty-third for the ski show. Um, the. The, um, actual bands, the water van stand, actually having a band play out, they would be August fourteenth at five o'clock.
My wife's birthday, I'll just tell her that I had to put it on for her.
Perfect.
Perfect. Usually it's the old home day, but it works.
Mr. Whitman?
Wait, we're gonna be meeting this coming Wednesday. Wednesday, I'm looking at your date again, say the fourteenth?
The fourteenth of August for the water van stand.
Uh-huh.
But, I'm not.
It's interesting, because.
Why?
Well, the fire. We're having a car show in the center of town on the sixty, that could almost be part of old home weekend.
There you go, join in together.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, why not?
So you're talking the show on the fifteenth?
On the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, on the Friday.
Fourteenth, on a Friday night at five o'clock, the band will play on the water.
So, okay, so it'd be a band there that night, and then the following night, you sure Kelly hasn't booked something for the, uh, other bands?
There's a Saturday, sorry.
Not, those usually Saturdays, yes.
Yeah.
I know, they usually are, but she's added something, I'm doing it Thursday.
Yeah, this is not.
Thought you might.
We just have one, we can't do one for July.
But if that happens, you guys on the fourteenth, the fire department on the fifteenth, car show on the sixteenth, we've had an old, old weekend there, so I think.
You add a few more goodies to what you got it made.
Well, I'll, I'll bring that up Wednesday night at the meeting, then we do have a weekend, you know?
Technically, you can, that way there, yes, good, yeah, that's great.
We'll be discussing, um, Wednesday night, I'll have more to report next week.
Throw by the view and then we can be a test.
Right now, how it's looking for the car show day, the Sunday, is, uh, with the, uh, emergency team meetings, that we even have. It looks good for the car show, it looks good for live entertainment, and it looks good for food management, food trucks, around. Uh, but still, there'll be, I don't know where the food trucks are coming from, I'll probably find that out Wednesday night. Uh, originally, Roger had talked about getting in touch with Carnival Company, because they're not doing much.
I think it's food, food trucks.
But I've also heard through another member of the committee that maybe the DABA would get involved to arrange for the food trucks. And I spoke to the chief today at the emergency meeting about wherever they're gonna be, probably should be okay by the chief and the chief, you know? But more information on that next week, but that's where we are right now. But I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that would be a three-day weekend, probably Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Uh, nothing, the meeting ain't till the twenty-first.
This week, gentlemen, in your, in your mailboxes, you have the budget expenses up to June, I'd like to have you take a look at them. Next week's meeting, I'm gonna have a, a new business budget expenses, if you have any questions or concerns, I'd like to have you bring it up then. Also, town administrator will have revenue expense on property taxes, but it's like the date, but it's my understanding from the town clerk two weeks ago and from Liz tonight, that we are exceeding what we normally exceed at this time for a half year.
Wow.
So two weeks ago, I believe we said only it was within two million, so the, two million, fourteen million dollars, and it wasn't July sixth yet. So people are actually stepping up and paying the taxes.
Wow, that's.
I want you to, I want you to.
Look to the public.
I want you to look at the budget expenses and the revenues, if you have any questions or concerns, I wanna bring up next week, one of the business line items, so we can just discuss it and go forward. There is, uh, one of the town administrator's report, and I'm gonna take the gusto out of it, with the, um, emergency management last weekend, uh, last week, I didn't attend today. But last week, we talked about every department possibly putting in budgetary items for sanitary disinfectants, cleaning supplies. The Fox and Rec does most of it now, because they do buildings and grounds, because they do most of the cleaning in the town buildings, except for, I believe they go in the highway. They do go in the police, go in the town hall, the public bathroom. But in talking with the whole group that day, there's regular office supplies that are in there, or general supplies, there, you'll probably see an increase in some of those lines this year for more disinfectants and different things. So we never, we don't run into the shortages that we did like this year, we're all scrambling.
My opinion is the office shouldn't have it like Mary's office downstairs and stuff, because you gotta go in and wipe them down.
Yes.
You know.
And they, and, and they, they do.
During the day, you gotta wipe down some stuff and it's.
But I, I, I had brought it up, that every department should be looking at it when they're talking to the chief and Liz, every department has general expenses, general supplies in it. I'm just gonna, all I'm saying is, we have to expect it's gonna be up this year because of everything that's been going on. Until they find the antidote, this virus, you're gonna see those constant cleaning expenses stay hot. So when you see it in the budget sheet, I don't want you to be shocked.
Are we gonna be all right, are we having the, um, by the chief, part of masks, make sure that we'll have enough masks for the, you know, this building?
And I believe emergency management team is looking into that right now. The other thing is, we had masks and some of them had expired, they were getting ready to throw out, and the reason they expire is because of the rubber bands, it's not the masks themselves, it's the rubber bands right now. So I just wanted to give you that, but I wanted to update you on the budgets, expense sheets, you have them, let's review them, if you have any questions, let's bring them in. Right, you said we review it halfway through the year, gentlemen, we're halfway through the year, November's coming, December's coming.
Uh, we gonna, that's gonna include the water department.
What, you got water department revenues and expenses right now? That sound fine with you, gentlemen?
Is it all in my list?
Those are all in your mailboxes, yes, sir?
Yes.
Every month.
Good idea.
Well, no, I, I haven't been in my.
You remember, we all said we wanted to review it halfway through.
Right.
Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna turn it over to the town administrator's report, I hope I didn't take your only gusto out of me.
I have no report.
Oh. Don't mind.
Oh, my God, holy crap, what happened?
Okay, gentlemen, don't, 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 don't take too long, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, July sixth, twenty twenty regular.
Motion that we approve the July sixth, twenty twenty minute.
Second by Mr. McDonald, through the July sixth, twenty twenty regular minutes, second by Mr. Whitman, any discussion on the minutes? I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Same.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is the affirmative, four-four, one extension by Paul O'Shea. Spot of attendance in the meeting. Next is July sixth, twenty twenty non-public.
I make a motion that we approve the July sixth, twenty twenty non-public session, ceiling one and two.
Second.
By Mr. McDonald, to approve the July sixth, twenty twenty non-public session minutes. Chief's sale number, item one and item two, as presented. Second by Mr. Whitman, discussion, poll board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Stand.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, vote is affirmative, four-four, one extension, Paul O'Shea. This time, gentlemen, I'll take the entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Take our motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
I feel Whitman to approve the consent agenda as submitted, seconded by Mr. O'Shea, any discussion? Poll the board, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mr. Whitman, yes, vote is in the affirmative. Discretionary action on request for appointments, no discussion, majority vote replied to loudly, having no request. Non-public session, gentlemen, we have none on public session. But at this time, I'll enter a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-nine.
Yeah, right.
What you doing here? Maybe Paul O'Shea to adjourn, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Whitman, any discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
We have posted affirmative, folks, thank you for attending tonight, and have a good evening.